Good afternoon. It is May 23, 2022. We are having our Clayton Budget Audit Committee meeting. First, I'll start with Roll. Councilmember Jeff Wong. And Vice Mayor Holly Tillman.
Here.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. At this time, I do not have any speaker cards from anyone in person, and I do not have any hands raised via Zoom. So we'll go ahead and close that item. Our next item is action items. Workshop for fiscal year 2022, '23, draft budget. And I will pass this over to City Manager Schwartz.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilmember Wong and Vice Mayor Tillman. I am pleased to be here this afternoon to provide you an overview and a presentation on a preliminary proposed budget for fiscal year 2023. As you are well aware, the city's finances face a number of challenges, both currently and in the future. And although the city's general fund revenues are growing more quickly than they have in the past, it's still not enough to cover anticipated costs in the coming year. What you will see in the proposed budget, as Catherine reviews them, is that there are cost pressures in many areas. Labor costs, electric costs, and insurance being some of the most significant. The proposed general fund budget shows a few options for balancing the current year. One of the key issues to determine is whether to use one-time ARPA or pandemic recovery reserve funds to help cover the deficit. This is particularly relevant as it pertains to a proposed COLA for unrepresented miscellaneous employees. While foregoing a COLA would save nearly half of the deficit, it would also compound an already difficult work environment in terms of high workload for relatively lower pay. While a 3% COLA won't necessarily be sufficient to keep employees from looking for better paying opportunities, I believe it is important to support our staff with this cost of living adjustment. Beyond today, and even beyond the City Council budget hearings of July 7 and July 21, there is much work to be done. One of the areas that needs the most focus going forward is to fully assess our fees. While fees typically cannot exceed the cost of providing the service, it's important to evaluate our fees to determine if we are where we should be in terms of cost recovery. Additionally, we need to begin a comprehensive outreach and engagement campaign with the community to bring them into our budget discussions and financial discussions in a more in-depth way. I will now be turning it over to Catherine Korsek, our Finance Director, to review the major pieces of the proposed budget of the general fund and of other funds. So Catherine, you will move over there, and we're gonna do a little PowerPoint dosido.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Wong and Vice Mayor Tillman. We've been working hard on this, next year's fiscal, fiscal year 2023 budget. And I'd like to give you guys a tour of the ClearGov platform. So. Let's see. I practiced. So this is ClearGov. Basically, you can see the home screen where you have all the different modules. There's a capital budgeting module, a personnel budgeting module, and then an operating budget module. The personnel budget module is, it syncs with operational. We were one of the first cities to try the syncing function because that's a new functionality in the program. And it seems to have worked fine for us. The capital budgeting module is not syncing yet. So it's a standalone module, but that will sync sometime in the near future. We also got to be one of the trial cities for the organizational chart. So if you notice in our budget documents, the org chart is very small. They're working on getting that bigger for, you know, making it bigger so that everyone can see it. But basically, we're one of the trial cities for this organizational chart also. So if you can see, you can see it a little bit better on this screen. Just in the digital budget book, it came out very small. So it, basically, it's the same org chart as last year's. We just reorganized a little bit and made it a little bit clearer. And where we've been doing most of our work is in the operational budgeting module. This module, you can see, we have all of our funds. So each fund has its own operational piece to it. And then, basically, we work within the funds, and then it pulls into the digital budget book. So from, basically, from the last saved version, it pulls into your digital budget book, which is what you have access to through the staff report. We've sent you the link. And you should have access to it if you go to cleargov.com and type in Clayton, California. You can access the digital budget book there also. So the first fund that I'm going to go into is the general fund. And I actually wanted to go into it by showing you in ClearGov. As you know, general fund is our, basically, like our most operating, all of our operations coming, are coming from the general fund. All of our nine departments are within the general fund. So at this point, with no, no transfers in from rainy day or pandemic reserve fund, we are at a project, a projected deficit of $122,265. This takes into consideration one police car at a replacement cost of $70,000. It takes into consideration a MISC COLA at 3%. It takes into consideration the police department's already negotiated 4% raise for the year and some HVAC charges, maintenance charges. So I just wanted to also show you, kind of going into the general fund, how the program works, so you can kind of get a feel for how we're working in this program. Basically, in the general fund, you see all of our departments here. So city is just, it's not actually, it's not a department, but it's like the 00 account. Legislative is the city council. Admin, finance, and legal, public works, community development, general services, police, library, engineering, and the Clayton community park. So we basically can, I'm gonna just kind of go down if you can see this. You can go within, within the department. Each department is separated by salaries, benefits, and operations. And we can also pull all of those different types of categories together. If we just wanted to see salaries across the board, you could pull that in a separate report. And then, this is a nice function of the program. It allows you to attach documents or comments back and forth when we're doing things. So if we have questions for each other, we can put it here, and then we don't miss, you know, miss things. We can also add line items within an account. So like for building, grounds, and maintenance, and public works, we added all these sub, basically like sub-accounts or sub-line items to an account. So that helps us to keep track of exactly what that, you know, the top number, what it's rolling up into. Versus before, we were keeping track of this, I think, more of like an Excel spreadsheet or multiple sheets that would pull up. So it's nice. It helps us keep track of things. And then, as far as for our fund balances, those are kept track of in the fund, in a fund balance area. And we are still updating these as we have some, you know, we have projections for the year end of 2022. And then, off of whatever budget is approved, we'll have proposed. So these numbers will, they're fluid at this point, and they will change. So this is ClearGov. So now I'm going to stop this share and go back to our PowerPoint. So we are going to focus on general funds still at this point, and then we'll come back to all the other funds. But we are going to go over landscape maintenance district fund, the neighborhood streetlights fund, the stormwater fund, the CFA fund, the pension stabilization fund, the pandemic recovery reserve fund, and then we'll look at a CIP overview. We chose these acc- No problem. It's okay. All right. So we chose these, these funds. They're the most relevant for this meeting as we have some action for most of these funds or some recommendation for you to consider.
Do you have a, sorry. Is it supposed to be red, or?
Yes, you're on. Oh, you were on. Now you're on.
Is there a list of funds that we're not discussing then? If that's to get the complete set?
There is a list in the staff report that identifies which funds have not been completed yet. So we are typically not discussing those. And then, all of the funds are listed in the budget book itself.
So our goal today is to receive directions from both of you on how to move forward with our current year's budget and what, what you would like to bring to the overall City Council. And then, at the very end, we will look at the accounting cleanup plan and the status of that. So first, we're starting out with revenues. This is, this is all back to general fund. You can refer to page 43 in your budget book. So basically, our largest portion of revenue are taxes. There are ad valorem property taxes, sales tax, the vehicle in lieu of fee or tax that comes through as property taxes. And. And the other one is franchise fees, but those are separate from property taxes. A large portion of our general fund depends on admin support transfers, which are transfers from other funds. So stormwater, streetlights, multiple different funds transfer money in, and that makes up about 24% of our current revenues for our general fund. We have charges for services at 5.9%, licenses and permits at 3.4%, other in lieu of fees at 2.7%, operating grants and contributions at 1.5%, interest on our investments at 1.3%, and all other small revenues at less than a percent.
What's, what's the denominator on this pool here? Is it the 6.8-ish?
On the, the 6.86 is the, on the ad valorem property tax base. Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, no, total revenue.
No, it's the, yeah, it's total general fund revenues. It's the denominator, yes.
All right, thanks.
So I just wanted to point out just once, I'm sure that you are all aware of this, but the ad valorem property tax that we receive on a million, on a million, $1 million home at a property tax base rate of 1%, $10,000 is the total base tax. 686 of that goes to the city of Clayton, and 9,313 of that goes to all these other listed areas, which are Mount Diablo Unified School District at 36%, Conacosta County Consolidated Fire District at 15%, the school, K-12 Schools E-Rath at 13.3%, the County General Fund at 12.2%. So, and all these other, these other things. So, and that is on page 46 of the budget document, that chart. On page 44 in our budget document, you can refer to the major source revenue trend line. This illustrates a gradual recovery of local revenue sources following the Great Recession. Revenue sources with delayed downturns arising from the recession, i.e. property tax in lieu of vehicle licensing fee and general property taxes, have made a comeback and have exceeded the pre-recession levels since fiscal year 2014, '15, while sales and use taxes are steadily, steadily increasing and franchise fees have flattened or started to decrease slightly. This is our, showing our general fund revenue 20-year history compared to the Consumer Price Index. So the Consumer Price Index is in red, and our budgeted revenues are in blue. So as you can see from the chart, they're just, our, our revenues aren't keeping up with CPIs. You can also refer to that on page 49 of the budget document. So, so some of the things that we've, we've already said and Rena has listed, and I think I just mentioned also, that are cost drivers of our general fund needing some assistance. We have, the Police Officers Association already has a negotiated 4% raise. The MISC employees, we would like to suggest a 3% COLA. The dispatch services have increased significantly. There's been increased cost of health insurance. All our required insurances through MPA have increased. That includes general, cyber, crime, vehicle. Our CalPERS unfunded liability is starting to approach the peak. However, it, it won't, it really won't until about 10 more years. So we're going uphill right now with CalPERS. So every year, our two largest CalPERS plans will continue to increase. The four other plans aren't really increasing much, and those don't really make up much of that unfunded liability. The current budget document, we didn't take into consideration our account, our account, our savings that we will see of about $15,000 from prepaying that. And I caught my error this morning, so sorry about that. So we will see another $15,000 of savings from prepaying in July on our plans. The animal care services contract has increased, and we have no control over that. Electric and gas price, you know, prices just continue to go up. There is an election cost of about $15,000 for the fall election. We have required actuarial reports for our GAZB 68 and 75 reports. Those are for our pension and our OPEZ liabilities that are required for our annual audit. Our legal services have increased by CPI. We have our new engineering services, and we need, we have a backlog for them to, to refine and work on. We need IT support for our in-person hybrid city council meetings. Now, this slide, you can't really see up there, so you can refer to page 38 in your budget. And this basically lists everything that I just said. I think the only thing that it doesn't list is, there's a few, there's a few things on here. It doesn't list like the engine, I'm sorry. The police radio lease payment. That was already appropriated from the rainy day fund, so that will come from the rainy day fund for the first lease payment. But next year, we will have to decide where the second payment will come from and thereafter. We have seen some savings in other areas. Our PERS normal cost has decreased, and that is due to the fact that most new employees that are hired are not, they're, they're on Pepper plans, which are much less expensive to the city. We should not have a need for much recruitment as we have fulfilled or filled all of our department head positions. And our water seemed to have been overbudgeted in the past. We went off of actuals for water and increased that by 10% to account for the drought. But we also hope to offset increased water expenses with, with saving water and putting in water-saving devices. So expenses by function within the general fund, as you can see, police make up about 40, 41% of our, our general fund expenditures. Other city is 21%. Admin, finance, and legal is about 16%. Community development is 5.5%. General services, 4.4%. Clayton community park, 4%. Public works, buildings, and parks is 3.2%. Engineering is 2.4%. And library and legislative are just over, well, library is 2% and legislative is 1.3%. And you can refer to those on page 52 of your budget. So beginning the 2022 fiscal year, our beginning fund balance was $5.9 million. Our revenue was 5.1 plus our ARPA fund transfer in of 1.4 and our ARPA transfer out of 1.4. So just so you understand how it's working, and you probably already do, but as a reminder, we have the, the Fund 232, which the, the money from the federal government comes into Fund 232, and it acts as like a holding account. And then, we transfer it into our general fund and transfer it out into the pandemic recovery reserve fund, and that is now Fund 111. So basically, it's a transfer in and transfer out, and it's not sitting there. It's not going to be a holding account. But we do see that as an increase, you know, a significant increase if you were to look at the total revenue and expenses for general fund because of the $1.4 million that. So that's why on this slide, I, I took that out so you can see the different, the more realistic revenue is the 5.135, $887, and the expenditures are 5.135, 600. So basically, at the end of this year, we are projecting that we're gonna break even exactly. I think we're projecting a $300, $287 ahead. So.
Is, is the 1.4 considered revenue from general fund from the previous slide at the pie chart that you had?
Yes.
Okay, so we're considering the transfers revenue?
Yes.
It is in terms of calculating those percentages. And so you, you saw a few in the descriptions in the budget document, and I think in the staff report as well, that I've often pulled those out and said, you know, here's what it is with ARPA. If you pull that out, so you can get by comparison. So for example, in the pie chart, police is 40-ish percent. You asked what the denominator was. If you pull out ARPA and just set that aside, police is about 51-ish percent, which is consistent with what it's been in past years. So we haven't suddenly dramatically reduced the percentage of our budget that we're spending on police. It's just depending on how you show those revenues. So I've tried in most cases to list that both ways so that you have some ability to compare to prior years as well as to look at what the actual full numbers are gonna be for this year.
So if we look at fiscal year 2023, you see, basically, we're, we're beginning the year with the same fund balances last year. And our expenditures outweigh our revenues by about $122,000. You know, with the savings of the $15,000 that we will see from prepaying our UAL, that could decrease a little bit. But there could be, you know, a pretty small amount. So if, yeah, so that, that could decrease. So basically, what we're hoping to get your input on are these four items. If you decide that you don't want to dip into the pandemic recovery reserve fund, there are a few things that we could hold off on this year. We could hold off on replacing a police vehicle. That would save $70,000. Though we might have an increased cost for maintenance because there, you know, increased maintenance when you stop replacing vehicles just is inevitable. There's, we could roll back the COLA for the city manager, which is a savings of $7,658. We could hold off on the MISC unit 3% raise, which is a savings of $55,820. And I listed here that we'll see the savings of 15 when we prepay our CalPERS UAL. So all of these above total $148,500.
And if I could just add, when we do come back to this conversation, so, you know, those are potential options, as Catherine said, for not dipping into the pandemic recovery reserve or using ARPA funds, using long-term funds. There are, of course, some other things in the budget, but honestly, there, everything else is a little more interwoven and a little less discretionary, and becomes a little more difficult to look at making specific cuts for cost-saving measures. And so that's why these are pulled out as, you know, here are some larger chunks that you could consider for options to using one-time funds if that's the desire of the committee and then ultimately the council.
Can you remind me where we were pulling that $70,000 for the police vehicle? Where was that gonna come from?
It's general fund.
It was general fund?
Okay.
I don't know why I thought it was rainy day.
I thought that was capital improvement.
We transfer from the general fund into the capital and equipment replacement fund in order to buy the vehicle out of the capital equipment replacement fund.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Are you looking for that right now? Or are we gonna have a more holistic discussion about the whole thing? Or are you taking a piece now?
So I was hoping to get through the entire- So I was hoping to get through the entire presentation first and then come back, circle back to the, the general fund.
Cool.
Okay, because they're all, a few of them are somewhat, you know, interrelated, so. So we will move on to the landscape maintenance district fund. Now, this fund has a substantial fund balance. There are projects that need to be completed that have not been done. Recently, the Trails and Landscape Committee has met twice, and they have reviewed this fund's budget, and they approve it or they recommend it to the city council for approval. This district does not typically need to have such a large fund balance. It should use its fund balance on an annual basis. So this year, we're hoping to complete multiple projects and use up the fund balance. So we're beginning with a little bit over a million dollars, and for this year and ending, we're projecting to end with about seven hundred thousand dollars. And so the next year, we would use that up and end with about a ninety thousand dollar fund balance.
Is the detail budget in the past? Do you know what page that's on?
It is under departments. It is under departments too, both places, okay. Oh, you're right, sorry, never mind. I'm thinking of.
Thank you.
The next fund is the Neighborhood Streetlights Fund, Fund Two Fourteen. This is an assessment district, and the tax revenues are not keeping up with the cost of the district. The primary driver of this cost increase is electricity, which eighty percent of the costs to run this district are attributed to electricity costs. The beginning fund balance for twenty twenty-two was fifty, around fifty-one thousand, and this year, we will end with right about twenty-three thousand. And so next year, we are projecting to see close to an eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollar deficit for this fund. So this fund needs some assistance. And for ongoing sustainability, there is not a plan for this fund. The Stormwater Fund, Fund Two Sixteen, is also approaching a net zero balance. This year, there is a new state mandated stormwater regulation, MRP three point oh, which is going to increase the cost of compliance, including staff time and possibly other types of consultants. The largest costs in this fund are street sweeping, and that's at fifty-seven thousand two hundred, and state regional discharge fee at eleven thousand. And then we can see here, the beginning balance is for this year is forty-nine thousand. It ends at thirty, projected to end at thirty-six thousand. And in twenty twenty-three, we are projecting that we will end at around eighty-five hundred dollars. So in, in twenty twenty-four, this fund will also be negative. And this, this, you know, doesn't take into consideration if there were any unexpected costs that we don't know about with the new regulations. The Clayton Financing Authority Fund, which is Fund Four Oh Five. We haven't used this, this fund for anything since twenty seventeen, eighteen, when we replaced our HVAC system in City Hall at a cost of about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. We're bringing this, this fund in because we are hoping to allocate seventy-five thousand from this for major repairs to the library's HVAC system. There are, there's a need for controllers and a few duct work and other things related to the library's HVAC. So the beginning fund balance of this one is, in this year, is five hundred and ninety-eight thousand. And the ending is six hundred and seven thousand, or projected ending. And so with the cost of the library HVAC repairs, we are projecting to end this fund at five hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars.
What's the ninety-two hundred?
Uh, interest earnings, an estimate for. Yeah, share of interest earnings, yeah. The Pension Rate Stabilization Fund, which is Fund Five Oh Two. The main reason that I wanted to mention this fund is in our areas for improvement in the budget document, we have three different areas. This is one of the funds that would be affected by, by the areas for improvement, which is a need to establish both pension and an OPEB policy for long-term planning on how we manage our pension debt. And I just wanted this as a placeholder. We have already put a good amount of, you know, two hundred and, almost three hundred thousand dollars into this fund. So, and the revenue is just also interest earnings, Gatsby thirty-one allocation for interest earnings. So there are many, well, there are, I'd say, a handful of ways that we could manage our pension debt. And we, we would like to look at that this year. And the pandemic recovery reserve fund is our next fund, and this is directly related to the ARPA Fund Two Thirty-Two. Just to remind you, ARPA is where the money comes in, in and out, and the balance will be zero. And the pandemic recovery reserve fund allocates only at the direction of the city council, and the use of its funds are assigned. The ending fund balance in twenty twenty-three will depend on the direction from the city council as to the priorities. This fund balance that I am, this, this one balance that I'm projecting is based on whether, is based on if you approve all of the recommendations that we are coming forth or bringing forth. So I'm going to go back to those. There we go. So, ah, sorry. If we appropriate a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty-five thousand to shore up the general fund, we will ensure that we do not need to make any of the cuts to the following. The Police Department Vehicle Replacement Plan, the raise of three percent for miscellaneous employees, the increased HVAC maintenance costs, and maintaining an adequate budget for engineering services. We have a few additional needs that we are also proposing, which total two hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars. And that includes a one-year limited-term senior accountant position, shoring up the streetlight district shortfall of close to nineteen thousand, the additional I T support for modernization and increased cybersecurity, and a records management digitization project, and that is fifty thousand for the records management. And I'm sorry, the additional I T support is thirty-five thousand. So if, if all of those are approved, the ending fund balance for twenty twenty-two is, is projected at around three hundred and eighty-one thousand. And once we receive the money from the federal government in July, the next year's projected fund balance would be around one point four seven five, one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So the ending fund balance for this year, you know, takes into consideration the Clayton CARES program that we are still administrate, administering. It's, it's kind of, it's, it's at the end of its program. We aren't having very many applications come in anymore, but I, I could see between fifty and eighty thousand still going out. And this takes into consideration that. So I think this ticked into consideration eighty thousand dollars more, so that would be eight more applications before the end of June. So, yeah, so now Rena will talk about CIPs.
Great, thank you. I'm going to just give a brief overview on the CIPs, and then if there are more detailed questions, I do have Larry Fiesker, who is our city engineer. So we, we don't have a lot of CIPs, that's pretty typical, I think. And the first, North Valley Playground Renovation ADA Drop Off, that's just finishing up the last piece of that North Valley Playground project, which would put in a handicap drop-off spot, so we need to complete that, and engineering is working on that. Pine Hollow Upgrade, that is a project that we are jointly undergoing with the City of Concord to look at traffic and pedestrian improvements all along Pine Hollow through Concord and into Clayton up to the elementary school. Our portion is, is obviously a very small portion of it. In September, we should be bringing a presentation to the council about the proposed improvements that would be part of that for the Clayton area, and we will need future funding for that project, but there is no specific ask in this year's CIP because that's still pending all of the final design and evaluation. We have an ADA Transition Compliance Program, which we annually put six thousand dollars into. It's just kind of a little fun if we have extraordinary ADA work that needs to be done. Next slide, thank you. And then we have a couple of roadway improvement plans. One that the council just approved, including allocating funding, is our twenty twenty-three pavement rehab project. So some streets that we weren't able to include in the twenty twenty-two project, we now have sufficient funding to move forward for twenty twenty-three. So that is the paving project. The downtown pedestrian improvement project. We had a Measure J Transportation for Liveable Communities grant for improving the crossings in the downtown as you come down from the school to raise those and provide better visibility, so this would spark that project. That project has, I want to say it's two hundred and seventy-two thousand total in Measure J TLC, Transportation for Liveable Communities. That project will likely need some additional funding, but this will allow us to get started on design and make sure that we know what we need to do to make those improvements. Then the last piece is a portion of developing a local roadway safety plan. This is a plan that all, pretty much all the communities in the Bay Area are putting together, and in the state, looking at where they're, looking at accident data, looking at safety data, and the next round of one Bay Area grant or OABG funding that comes through from the federal government through the regional transportation agencies, eventually to cities and counties. They're requiring that a local road safety plan be completed before being eligible for most of those grants. Caltrans is also moving that direction. The total cost for a local road safety, roadway safety plan is maybe closer to thirty or forty thousand. This would get us started. We're also working with CTC to, let me, CCTA to see if we can get grant funding to provide the rest of the money for the local roadway safety plan. So not, not a whole lot of CIPs, but a few more to keep some of our transportation projects moving. And with that, I think what we will want to do before we get to the accounting cleanup, so we can stop sharing the screen, I believe. And as I mentioned, and as Catherine mentioned, really, our purpose today is to bring this forward, to give you some insight into what we're seeing in the budget in terms of cost drivers, in terms of what next year looks like. As I promised at a meeting, some number of meetings ago, I, I will give you a balanced budget. I did not forget that when I show a hundred and twenty-two thousand or a hundred and seven thousand if we take into account the fifteen. But really, the goal is to get input before we tie it all up in a bow and even bring it forward to the next round of review. So we're looking for questions, we're looking for feedback, a conceptual question about whether or not to look at one-time funds, and some of those, a few discretionary decisions in the context of the budget. And so with that, Catherine and I are here for questions. I have my department heads, as you can see, so folks are ready, and we will do our best to answer all of your questions today, so thank you.
Well, thank you all. What's wrong?
Yes. If the council has questions, you may ask questions, but before deliberation, we will ask for public comment. Just a reminder. Thank you. So, but if you have questions, you may ask questions, and then we will have public comment before deliberation.
Okay, let's see, I tried to put them in order. You have to have stickies everywhere, let's see. All right. Can we go back to the CIP, I think it was in the CIPs? Let me just tell you what, it might not have been in the CIPs. It was the Stormwater Fund Two One Six. I have a question about that one. It was mentioned that staff time would be necessary, I think, to bring us in compliance, and I'm just curious what, what that cost looks like?
I don't know the cost. It's not to bring us in compliance, it's to maintain with the new permit regulations. Those just came out literally two weeks ago, ten days ago, and we're still deciphering through some of that. And some of that is going to require subsequent meetings with the Water Board staff to find out whether they, the board kind of deferred some things with them and the cities, the permittees, to work on implementation. So we don't know yet what those costs are going to be. I don't expect hopefully a heavy lift for this fiscal year's budget. There may be some things more on the administrative end getting set up for those next regulations, but I believe twenty-three, twenty-four is when we're really going to start to see what we need to do, when we need to do it by. And it's simple thing, not simple things, but it's just even now having to manage private property, commercial properties drainage and undeveloped lands drainage into our city drainage ways. What does that mean? What does the Water Board want for that? So I don't know the full effort of a workload on that at this time.
Okay.
I would expect we will have more information by mid-year.
Okay.
And then if there is things, we can come back at mid-year, and then if need be, ARPA funds or other suggestions might need to kind of gap it and kind of look then what the following years look like.
But are we, when we say staff time, are we talking about possible overtime? I understand that's you. Are we talking overtime? What does that mean?
It could be city engineers' time, because they're now on board and very familiar with some of the things that are happening in that as to what we need to do in terms of studies and documents and tracking of documentation and information and submitting that annually to the Water Board. We don't know what the GIS framework that the Water Board wants us to utilize is going to look like. We're trying to do some of this at a regional level with all of the cities participating, try to keep economies of scale there. But it is going to take staff time to input into those databases, keep those databases up to date. So it's not only my time, but it would be the city engineer's time, it could be a consultant's time as well, depending on what the nature of the data is that we're looking for.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all that. I'm still just trying to understand what staff time cost means. Are we saying that there will be overtime that has to be paid, and you don't know that amount because you don't know how much work you have to do? I just want to, I thought that's what it said. That's why I want to go back to the page.
An allocation of their staff time.
Thank you.
So when they work on, when they work on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Their payroll will be allocated, so no overtime since we're a salaried employee. However, portion of her salary and benefits will get allocated.
I got it now, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Sorry to keep beating that, but I just wanted to make sure I was not going home with the wrong perception. Okay. Then there was.
Can I have a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
So if it's permanent, well, I don't know actually if it's permanently staff time, because when I look at it, it shows, you know, current year one sixty-two and twenty-three, projected one twenty-eight, so we're looking at like a sixteen thousand dollar lift. Is that sixteen, what makes up that sixteen thousand other than like increased costs for everything? Is there anything in particular that we're identifying that that yields that sixteen thousand on the Stormwater? Because I imagine staff time is.
I believe it's admin support transfers, which.
But then shouldn't that be saving somewhere else? Because we don't transfer greater than what's incurred on a proportional basis, right? So if it, if we're talking internal costs, it should just be take one from the other.
There's also some maintenance, and I don't know Catherine, if you can take a look at that, there's some maintenance time, they go out and do inspections containing of storm drainage areas. And.
Sure.
With the drought, we had a little bit less of that this year, but we're expecting a heavier lift on that. We also have to remark all of our storm drains with no dumping drains to creek and those decals have gone up in price. And we did some, last year we have some more money in this budget to try to complete that work effort over the fiscal year so that we're in compliance with making sure that we've got our decals on all the storm drains throughout the community. So that is a direct cost and I can't remember how much we put in for that, but it was two thousand dollars.
Overall, okay, yeah, my mic's off when I'm talking. It's, some of it is salary and benefit costs, which are just driven by labor costs. There's about six thousand in operating costs, which I'd have to look more deeply to to figure out, but there's no one thing. It's just a little bit of this and a little bit of that. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that the, part of the statement around staff time is not so much a statement of dollars as a statement of pressure on ability of staff to do other things. Because as the regulatory requirements increase and staff has to spend time doing those regulatory requirements, then they can't do other things. And so those regulatory requirements start to crowd out our ability to do other things. So yes, we may have additional costs that we'll face in more likely twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-two, twenty-three, but even more so than that, it's that we will continue to have workload pressures that come from that regional permit, along with all of the other jurisdictions in the Bay Area.
And this might be a silly question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. For MPA, I know that it's the insurance person. Is is that literally the only option that's out there? Is that for everyone that's in the Bay Area?
So MPA, the joint risk pool that we belong to, is most of the cities in Contra Costa and all, but most of them in a couple of other cities. Typically, small jurisdictions will do better by pooling to get insurance than if we go out on our own. If we went out on our own, we would have much higher rates because there would be no capability of scaling or risk sharing. And so, yes, there could be other options, but it, the evaluation that was made, you know, twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, ten years ago, is that it wouldn't save us any money. The insurance markets, Jeff probably knows this better than anyone, but the insurance markets, particularly when it comes to liability because of wildfires, because of cyber, because of cybercrime, those two in particular have gone completely out of control increases in the last two to three years, more so. And so I, you know, we can always look at that again, but typically, small cities do not do well when they go out on their own, they do better in a pool. And those areas that are driving those insurance increases are coming across the board, they are not unique to us, to MPA. It's it's everywhere.
Is MPA the only pool available?
No, there are other pools in the state.
A risk to try to go out to go get a new quote?
We could look at potentially trying to join another pool. I honestly, I mean, we could take a look at it, but I don't know that the benefit would be that significant, but we could. And that would probably be a two-year process.
Sure.
To to do solely because we'd have to, they'd have to, you know, we have to run all of our risk numbers and then they have to look at their risk numbers in conjunction with their risk numbers and then they say we either like you or we don't like you.
I don't want to make more work, I was just curious.
There's a lot of data collection involved.
Yeah. That's helpful, thank you. Okay. And then I think the last one, if you can just, well, I have a couple others. Do you have anything on, you probably don't have anything on that one, so I'm gonna keep.
I'm on MPA, but we don't have a lot of choices.
Okay, all right. For the, let's see here. Now I want to ask a quick, a couple of quick questions about the CIPs, if I may. For the Measure J Grant, can you remind me why those particular areas were chosen? I understand the one by the school, but it looked like there were some others that were, there was one on Marsh Creek Road at Main Street, I think. I'm just curious how those locations were were decided on. That's why I don't know, because I wasn't.
Thank you. Mindy Gentry, our former Community Development Director, was the one involved in putting together that grant application. My recollection is, one of the components was trying to enhance pedestrian safety in and around your downtown. And Clayton doesn't have very large downtown, so she looked at the two intersections that were the most vehicle-traveled ones and was trying to increase safety between pedestrians and vehicles. So the Marsh Creek Road Center Street or Marsh Creek Road, Main Street and and the school at Oak Street Center was was determined to be the two ones that would be supported and met the criteria for the grant.
That's unfortunate, because we really need one by, what is it, Moore Street and Center, across from the park where Grove Side Bistro is. That's the one that's a serious hazard as well, all of them are. I mean, our downtown's not that large, but.
I think it was a speed volume as well as the concentration of vehicles and obviously with the school pickup and drop-off time.
That makes sense.
Scurly at Oak and and Center. And so the other one was just based upon that street of Marsh Creek Road having a higher volume of traffic at potentially higher speeds.
Okay. Do you have any questions on that one? Okay. And then the North Valley Playground, again, I'm going to ask another silly question, but can someone explain to me why having the handicap drop off, drop off spot and coming into compliance with that is forty-eight thousand dollars? What exactly does that entail?
It's curb and concrete work, so it's, yeah, it's curb and concrete work. And, you know, you sneeze into concrete work and it's, you know, thirty thousand dollars. So.
And the minor amount of cost for pavement marking, this is going to be a parallel spot, kind of where the pathway, the concrete pathway comes out at near the end of the cul-de-sac, it would be in that location. So we have to have an ADA transition, there's some grade issues there, pavement marking and a flag, a pole and a sign. And then there's engineering cost to design it so that it can be constructed correctly.
And then my final question was in regards to the ARPA fund. I think that it was mentioned that we'd have the one point four plus million to begin next year with. And I thought that we had discussions on possibly using the next tranche for work that needed to be done around the city. So I was just curious why that wasn't taken into consideration. I guess because we hadn't decided that yet.
You haven't made any decisions yet regarding the one point four-six-seven that we'll get in our second tranche? And so that's really an upcoming discussion for, you know, what what's the, what's the broader strategy related to those ARPA funds in addition to the one-time uses that are being proposed here?
Just, just as a reminder, it's the ending fund balance of this year, which is close to around three hundred and eighty, almost four hundred thousand, plus the one point four that we will get in July. So the amount of money under consideration is about one point eight million.
Does it cost, I, I think someone told me sometime that it's like a thousand dollars per foot of concrete work on a sidewalk or something like that? Or something crazy? I don't know, it's insane. It's not a question.
Larry Fies, city engineer. It's very dependent on the type of work, essentially, as Laura mentioned, because it's in line with the existing sidewalk and it's parallel space, you're having to create an eighty path of travel both for the sidewalk and for the ramp at the same time. So it's a little unique as opposed to a parking lot where you just create a loading zone and you're able to get onto a ramp of a existing sidewalk. I'm hoping it will come in less, but it is, the construction cost, I would imagine, is at least twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars and then you you still need the design and the construction management cost.
Yeah, that's nice. And it's going great, so, so. Let's see. I don't have that many questions. The the LMD, the, these aren't in order, that was on page, what, seventy-two, I think you mentioned? Seventy-three. So like, can you help me understand the buildup of fund balance and the spend down that we're projecting in twenty-three? On page seventy-three of the packet, I think that's the table that I should be referring How are we separating the top amount, top table and the and the middle table here? I think I may be missing some headers, but I'm not sure.
One is a table, and and this one probably suffered from not getting a really clean edit. The the top table was the table for twenty-one, twenty-two, the table below it is the table for twenty-two, twenty-three, but we didn't do a lot of the stuff that we had planned for twenty-one, twenty-two in twenty-one, twenty-two. And so the, the, the fund balance ends up being still pretty significant as this fiscal year is ending and then we're bringing it into next year. But that second table is the proposal for twenty-two, twenty-three, and not everything in the table above it got done. You can see there's a column that says what was used versus what was originally budgeted. And that's how you step through from what was originally budgeted in twenty-two, what was used and got done in this year. And then for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're pulling that through.
Okay. And I was trying to align what is in these two tables on page seventy-three with what is in the packet. There's no page numbers, but for front to end. And so this shows twenty-two expenditures of one point six, that's different than, I can't find any of that here. And then it shows expenditures of one point eight for twenty-three.
So.
Am I supposed to combine the two?
Page, no, page seventy-seven in your book, in your book, if you just go a little farther.
All right.
You can see the FY twenty-two projected of one point six oh nine and then the proposed FY twenty-three budget of one point eight six two. And so that's, those are the total numbers and they include both the spent and unspent of the project numbers in FY twenty-two that are in the upper table. And then the proposed spending on projects in the lower table, that was what rolls up into the proposed FY twenty-three column in, on page seventy-seven in the budget book.
Okay. Okay, I see that now, thank you. Yeah, and there's always this one because this, I mean, we typically build up a larger balance here just because of the nature and timing of projects, I think, and that's harder to to digest for folks because you build up this dollars, but you don't spend it as you get it, right?
And, you know, for a variety of reasons, not which should be taken as excuses, between turnover and COVID, we're upstair behind on projects which we are now planning to move forward in FY twenty-three.
Okay.
And and just to add, we typically would have about maybe a two hundred to four hundred thousand dollar fund balance that would carry us through the fiscal year for cash flow purposes, but based upon a look back at our historical usage of getting projects done, they all don't happen at the same time. So having a lower fund balance, it's, it's not going to be that somewhere in the middle of the year, we're going to be short money to pay the water bill because we will have sufficient funds on hand and that we are looking to try to get some non-planting work done. That was one of the things the committee talked about, the landscape, Trail and Landscape Committee on the budget was focusing, like we did in prior droughts, on working on some of the trails and getting some of the trimming work done and and putting the funds into those areas. And the trimming is contracted out, so that would be, like, we did about three hundred thousand dollars worth of work this year and we're projecting a little bit less for next year, around two hundred thousand, which is still a significant amount of trimming work that we typically don't do that amount in in one fiscal year.
And now it's been going up.
Yeah, it has been, but it's good.
Yeah, no, it's, um, random, why do we even have Fund 405? It it feels like, I was, do we know the background or why that even exists? Can we kill it?
So the Clayton Financing Authority was set up for, let me just look, because I don't remember.
Well, maybe a different question. Do we still want it today?
Do we still what?
Do we still want it? Like, what is the purpose of it?
Well, we, it has funding available in it.
Yeah.
And so we need to identify what, what the project.
It came, it came through the redevelopment agency back when we had redevelopment, when we purchased, or when we sold.
Yes.
The CBS site. And so that money was placed there because it was the Clayton Financing Authority that made the acquisition and or made the sale. So that's funds that's theirs, of which the City Council serves as the Financing Authority Board. And typically, those funds are done for capital projects.
Yeah. I didn't know it was RDA connected.
Funds, yeah, that's where it can be used.
The gift that keeps on giving.
So it's actually a special district, so that's why, right? A joint powers authority. Yeah, sorry.
All right. Yeah. RDA is, gotta be lots of fun. That'll, I mean, that'll close out pretty soon, hopefully in two, eight.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Six years, four years, okay. Um, okay. Then when we talk about, I guess, I had a lot of questions around just how we're recognizing revenue. Like, when we, like, in ARPA, in the ARPA fund, um, I don't remember the number here, sorry.
Twenty-two, thirty-two?
Yeah, two, one eleven, two thirty-two, that one. So we're counting that, do we, we show that as revenue within the fund?
That's correct.
But then we also show it as revenue within the general fund?
So, so basically, it's coming into Fund 232 and then we're designating it for public safety provision.
Yes.
For the, the revenue recognition for their, you know, the Treasury's new rules that they created, so that we can use basically all of the money for public safety and then reappropriate what we're saving since we're not having to use that money for our pandemic recovery reserve fund. And so then we're putting that other money into pandemic recovery reserve and holding it there as long as we want. And we can use it at your, at the City Council's discretion.
And it, part of it is just, is this working? Hello? Okay. Hello? Can you hear me now? No. Part of it has to do with what the federal government wants to see. So they see the money coming into a fund, they like that, they see it being transferred to the general fund, which satisfies our reporting requirements. And then because it's freeing up other money in the general fund, we are transferring that to the pandemic recovery reserve. And so it's a bit of a artifact of the way that the federal government has structured the money and the way they want the money reported on, that we've sort of got it bouncing through these funds.
Yeah, that that part seems fine. I guess it it just strikes me as odd that we're calling it revenue in multiple funds. I would think that we call it revenue in one fund only and then all the others would just essentially be transfers in. And that is kind of a. And that is kind of a geography question, but, um, if, unless, like, as we're rolling out, we're going to eliminate the revenue, wouldn't it, like, show up as revenue in multiple places? That seems weird.
I, I think you are right, and I think I did that incorrectly, so let me go back and look at that. No, I had a discussion with management partners about this, so.
It feels weird.
Yes, I think I need to change that.
And, and the reason why I'm focusing on that is because if you do that, it obfuscates the idea that by utilizing ARPA or whatever fund it is into, from the general fund after it's been transferred, it, it looks like you're, you're in the black still, but you're not, right? I mean, you have to show that this is essentially deficit spending from operating revenues, and you're going to be transferring in from essentially another place it's getting the revenue. I, I don't know, I'm, I have to figure out how I want, I would say that exactly, but it just seems like it makes, it makes that piece unclear, uh, if we call it revenue in both places.
And the thing that I'm not sure about that I have to look at is if the transfer in is still considered revenue, because I believe that it is, because in all of our other funds, it is. So whether we call it a transfer, you know, we just have it a sub-line of revenue, it's still revenue. Um, we don't, this is all mostly for reporting purposes, for the, um, you know, Treasuries. They have special reporting that they're having us do. And then for our, um, our audit compliance, we're going to be having to undergo a, we don't have to undergo a full, single audit, but we will have to undergo, um.
Is it reporting?
A version of it that's less, and they, I, we've just been getting the regulations. I just actually recently got an email today on new regulations for that, so, um. Keeping it, though, in the Two Thirty-two and then moving it versus putting it into the general fund to start with and then moving it out is more clean.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not really concerned about the movement between funds at all, like, that, you gotta do the hops to track it, that's no big deal. But like, how we're describing it, it's, it's odd to call it revenue, but.
It's still revenue into the general fund, even if it is not from, it, it is a transfer from a special source. Um, if, if it helps, I mean, it's really about resources into the general fund. So some of those are things that you would most, more typically think of as revenues. Others are transfers in, whether that's transfers in from the, um, another grant source or from the, um, pandemic recovery reserve or from, um, some other, uh, admin recovery, et cetera. Those are all still considered revenues in the sense that they're resources to the general fund. Um, they are, uh, above the line, not other sources and uses, if you're used to a more traditional table. But, um, it, you know, ultimately, you know, we'll, we'll figure out the accounting end of it, but, um, they are still resources to the general fund.
Okay. Um, let's see. I think that, we didn't talk about, you, you briefly mentioned, um, the potential of the costs, and I'm trying to find the page here, but, um, the, the potential savings, uh, opportunities, as well as like, things that we would have to avoid. I forget what page that's on, um, it was earlier, right? No, forget. Yeah. Uh, you have, if there's that grid or that, that sheet, that was.
Page thirty-eight?
Probably.
Major budget changes, but, um.
All right, I got my pages out of order, so that's. Yeah, that one. Okay, anyways, um, we didn't talk about this too much, and. There's one question. So we had one FTE here, but on the other document, there showed a full FTE for senior accountant. Are those supposed to, oh, this is the changes that are already baked in?
Correct.
And the other ones are not baked in anywhere?
None of, none of the correct. Those extra two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollar additional, or two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollar additional, um, costs are not within the current deficit of one-twenty-two.
Okay, that, that was my question. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have for now. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna find that page.
Would you like to, um, have any public comment?
Yeah, that one. No, I have that one. No, I'm good.
I just have one more. Um, can, we, you had spoke briefly about the pension. Now I just lost my page trying to help, just, it's okay. Five oh three. I think you mentioned that there was, this is a good placeholder for this and that we'd come back and talk about it, but we didn't go back and talk about it. So can we talk about it? In the future, is that what you meant?
That's what I meant, yeah, in the future.
Thank you.
In the budget book, we have a page that's areas for improvement. And it's a little easier to get to when you're on the digital budget book. Like, you can see it, it's a little drop-down.
Oh, okay.
And we have, um, three areas for improvement. Well, actually, kind of four. One of them is to create, uh, um, uh, to refine and review the existing financial policies and create a new financial policies, um, document.
Uh huh.
Um, that would include, um, a few new policies, and the new ones would be, um, a pension and OPEV policy. And those, those would most likely be separate policies, um, but they are inter, somewhat interrelated, um, to create, or to refine our investment policy and create an investment strategy. Um, and, um, the last one is, um, that's right, our reserve policy, um, to look at our current reserve policy and, um, probably have a little bit more realistic reserve policy. Because our current reserve policy only, um, reserves around two, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, yeah, so, um, something that's, um, that would encompass, um, a more emergency planning, um, for the city.
Yeah, and I think we had started that discussion, what was it, last winter?
We started it right before, um, Catherine started, and then we, we put it on hold. Um, on pages thirty-four and thirty-five in the budget document, um, there's just a, a brief overview of those three areas. And a comment about the pension stabilization reserve fund is really just a reminder that we do need to talk, um, to the council after we get the budget adopted about what that pension, uh, what our pension policy is, what, what long-term strategy we may want to look at with respect, with respect to our pension and OPEV liabilities.
Uh huh.
Um, and we do have some money set aside, not a lot, when it's relative to the size of our pension liability, but it's a start. So, um, we're gonna wanna, um, come back and look at all of those items that are on pages thirty-four and thirty-five in the budget document. As we highlighted, are things we need to get to.
Thank you. Now I would like to hear from the public. Hi, Jim.
Hit that button.
We might. All right, thank you very much. Um, my name is Jim Killar, and I am a longtime resident of Clayton. And, uh, first I want to say again, good day to everyone, and I know everybody's working very hard to get this through the budget plan process. Um, overall, I've read the whole plan, it's a very good plan. The one thing I would just encourage, and I know you're trying to stay above water, but any budget I ever done in any company or organization is usually, you know, four-year budget or ten-year plan associated with it. So that's something that is missing there. But I know, again, you're trying to do a lot of catch-up work. So, uh, in the future, that would be very helpful, see those trends. Um, some of the key things here that I saw immediately is, uh, is that I do believe you need to have, provide the planned salary structure increases for miscellaneous employees and also for the city manager. Three and four percent is, it's very reasonable. And what I assume with many companies, at a minimum, is three to five percent. So, again, that's through friends, uh, for big companies, small companies. It's, it's very reasonable. And again, we're feeling what we know is our employees are paid less than competing cities. And so I think that's very important there. Uh, other things I think, you know, that we want to look at here is something I mentioned in some of the prior council meetings I've been at, is, you know, you're looking at a pin in the haystack, trying to figure out how do we resolve our budget deficits that are going to occur in the future? Especially what we know, there's a high side of significant risk when it comes to pension costs. The public doesn't understand these pension costs, but I know our council does, and I know I do. And I can say to you, these are very, um, optimistic assumptions that are coming from, that are being fed from Sacramento. And so, uh, what I would just say to you, looking at some of the things like, that caught my eye is, you know, we're going to talk a little about the fee schedules, but optimizing fees permitting and also engineering costs. Um, I'll give you my example on that, is what drives services. Um, I was thinking about replacing my driveway, about five hundred, six hundred square feet. And I couldn't even get through, through a, to, to our engineering department, but I probably called ten times. And I'm thinking, how many times do I need to talk to a city engineer? And as I was talking to other residents, the same thing, is that this drives costs, these contacts. So it gets into, why are we having a permitting process that's very extensive? That, that requires, uh, this type of work from an engineer where we need to be focused on key projects? That drives our costs up as residents, but it also drives city costs up. Um, landscape district, should we run a surplus? Maybe there's a strategic into that perspective of why we should run a surplus. I can talk to you after the meeting about that. Uh, and then the last thing is, should we share a police chief with other similar-sized cities? This has occurred in other cities in the Bay Area, so this will be a way of making sure we have continuity and pay maybe the city chief a little bit more money, but also saving the costs of the city. So I think I'm out of time here. Again, doing a great job, I'm really pleased with our council. I know sometimes people throw darts at you, but you're doing a great job. It's a volunteer job, so again, give it a little stiff in there, so thanks a lot.
Thank you. Janet, do we have anyone online?
We currently do not have any hands raised to be answered.
Perfect, then we can close public comments.
Committee members, it is back to you. We, uh, are open for either further questions or any, um, input on how we bring this forward to the council. And we would hope to have a recommendation on, uh, what we bring forward to the council for the June seventh city council workshop.
I'm trying to get back online, hold on.
So in the current state, we are, the one-hundred-and-twenty-two deficit in the general fund, is that reflective of no transfers in from the ARPA fund?
That's correct, that is no transfers. And i- if, um, we are able to prepay our, uh, UAL payment, um, that one-hundred-and-twenty-two would drop by about fifteen thousand, so the net.
One oh seven.
Yeah, we, we figured that out this morning. This is a, it's, it's an organic process, this document.
It's fluid.
Uh, it's a little more fluid than maybe one, um, would hope, but, uh, the good news is that that went in the correct direction.
If we, if we cap the city engineer, sorry, if we, if we cap the city engineers' costs, uh, per month, essentially, we're just delaying activity so that we, okay.
Yes. And there has been quite a bit of pent-up demand, as you're aware, for city engineering activity. And, um, Larry's doing a great job in trying to wrap his arms around getting all of that kind of organized and structured.
The vehicle, is this the police vehicle, the seventy-thousand-dollar police vehicle? Um, we're pretty mu, or we're not behind on our vehicle replacement at this time.
We just got caught up, um, a year ago. We, um, had been behind because we had put off a contribution a number of years ago. And we caught up and did two, uh, a year before, uh, and this year we're doing one. We just, that just came forward to the council, so we just got back on track. Uh, so we are currently on track.
What's the, what's the life of the vehicle that we put?
Um, we have eight police vehicles, so, um, we tend to get eight to nine years out of a police vehicle, which, um, is pretty typical. Um, they, uh, the, the vehicles run a lot, not a lot of miles, but a lot of hours because of all of the, um, electronics.
So, so is our oldest, or we, when we would replace one, we'd do the first in, first out thing?
Yeah, unless we've had one that has been, for some reason, a lemon every now and then you get one. But, uh, otherwise, it's oldest, uh, first.
So the one scheduled is what, eight or nine years old at this point?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. Do you draw straws to see who gets the oldest vehicle?
The chief could describe how he assigns them, I have no idea.
But typically, it's one police vehicle a year. And as the city manager mentioned, we did not contribute during kind of the recession time, so we did get behind, but we are on schedule for once a year. And it's the oldest car unless there's something tragic that's happened with another vehicle in terms of injuries or mechanical problems, and then it might, that one might move up.
And I guess, uh, this is not reflective of the two forty-eight number also, right? The two forty-eight is not included anywhere, it's just like a description of other things that we could do as well?
It's a request for other, um, uh, uses of one-time monies, um, that, uh, we would recommend. I think that we're slightly revised, again, slightly fluid document, about one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, two fifty-three, two forty-eight, one of those numbers.
Uh huh.
Okay.
So, um, but the, the, um, uh, of that two fifty number, there is one piece that I would say is really not discretionary, and that's that, um, we have about an eighteen, nineteen thousand dollar deficit, um, anticipated in the streetlight fund. So you kind of need to fund that unless you're gonna actually have us turn off neighborhood streetlights. Um, the other pieces that are in that, um, pot of, uh, requests are somewhat more discretionary, the streetlight one is actually not really that discretionary.
Well, I mean, yeah, okay. Every other light or something.
You're, you're street first.
We don't have, we pay for our own streetlights.
Oh, wow. That's how many wants the rest of the people to walk with length?
I, I, I pay the bill every month. It's, we have a soft fee.
Hmm.
We also have a guy in the neighborhood that will go from the ladder to replace it when it goes out, so we fix it ourselves.
Hmm.
Okay, cool. Do you have any thoughts on the? Yeah, I'm mostly focusing on, on these two pages here, because I think this, this, these two, this tells a story.
Yes, that was, that was the goal of those two pages, was to try to put in one place, sort of the big pluses and minuses, um, because, uh, it's a lot of moving parts otherwise, but that gives you kind of the big chunks.
So one thing that's missing here, though, is on the revenue side. Do we talk, is, do we have, has there been any discussion about other sources of revenue as well? Do we have, has that been contemplated, or? I know we had this, a discussion about fees, or not a discussion, sorry, we had a mention of fees. Um, is that, would we consider that part of this discussion?
So are you talking about just our normal master fee schedule?
Or other revenues, yes. But yeah, master fee schedule is probably a good place to start, or yes?
Um, it, we will be getting to that, probably not quite at this meeting, but, um, I don't think it's a significant amount, but even with increased fees, you know, we, we might be able to see a twenty thousand dollar increase in revenue, um.
Okay, because, I mean, we're pretty close, one-hundred-and-seven is not.
Yeah, a lot of the fees in our fee schedule, uh, Councilmember Juan, are covering staff time. They're deposit-driven accounts, so if a developer comes in or a project applicant comes in to do a project, it covers the staff time, so it's kind of tried, what it tries to do is make sure that we're not impacting the general fund for particular one-time services that a community member or developer would want to have. The added revenues would be ones that we would have through, um, renting of the community park, rental fees and that type of stuff. Um, obviously, for the last three years during the pandemic, we didn't have that. We're starting to see an increase in that. But at the same time, um, when Catherine brings back the fee schedule to you, we typically adjust it by the CPI, and we also look at the marketplace for fees, because we can't get to be where, to rent a picnic table's eight times the cost of a neighboring community. We have to have it reasonable, and it's a reservation fee. We have to have it reasonable, and it's a reservation fee, so it does provide a little bit of revenue. And I think it's like maybe eight or ten thousand dollars, six to ten, that we had this year at Clayton Community Park, maybe a little over six in our park, our Grove Park fees, that we didn't anticipate because we didn't know we would be renting already. So it doesn't give us a lot of extra revenue. It basically tries to cover costs as well as just a small amount. So as Catherine said, maybe sixteen to twenty thousand would be the net delta on the general fund.
I mean, kind of along the lines of what you were mentioning earlier about the crowding out impact when you have staff time devoted to things. You know, you can, you can do a one-for-one, and then you are essentially made whole on the dollars spent, but not necessarily on the time. And so, you know, if our fees are supposed to balance, or essentially just a, what do you follow it?
Cost recovery.
Cost recovery, that's a good, good term. If our fees are cost recovery, then it doesn't take into account the opportunity cost of that time. I mean, if you really wanted to, you could, you could charge what it would cost for you to hire someone to do that work for that specific thing and get a much different rate. I mean, if you're probably, like, when we're talking about stormwater, you're saying that the time spent crowds out other things. Well, I'm sure that 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 same thing applies for all of the other efforts that are cost recovery. And I don't think that we're showing the true cost of what that would be. So I, and I'm not saying that that's like any silver bullet or anything, but it, I don't think it should be overlooked as a potential for other sources of revenue. I mean, when we're talking about one hundred and seven, it's not large, and a few, a few little changes here and there could probably like get us a lot of the way there, is what I'm thinking, so.
I I will say that one of the challenges with this year and and the request to the council is that I think we need a little bit more time to do a bit more analysis on the fee side other than the CPI adjustments, which we could, you know, bring forward, that's fine. But if we're going to really look at, you know, are there, where are we with cost recovery and where should we be? That's going to take a little bit more effort, and, you know, we, we need to have a budget adopted. And so the recommendation is, you know, in the immediate term, to have this conversation about potential use of pandemic recovery reserve. If we are able this summer to do a more detailed analysis on the revenues, and we find that there are more revenues, then we can have that conversation. Does the council want to implement those fees? What does that do, you know, as that money maybe comes into our budget? Is it to to fund additional things? Is it to be able to move money back out into a reserve or the pandemic recovery reserve, et cetera? So I would see that as a bit more of a phased approach, but I, I would hate, I don't think we can commit to getting all that revenue work done in time to have that be the budget balancer for what the council is going to be set to adopt on June twenty-first.
Okay, yeah, I mean, my kind of similar sort of bit that you're making about, well, for engineering to come out and do a bunch of reviews, that if we cap, if we were to like cap engineering costs to a certain amount, that essentially crowds out other work or things like that, and that could be, you know, a potential for efficiencies that we really just focus on the things that are the most value add versus less.
The, 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 as Laura mentioned, the most of the engineering work is on a deposit basis, so the engineer's time on a, you know, to go out and inspect something is charged to that project, it's not charged.
It doesn't go into our retainer component?
It does not go into the retainer, so they are, those are somewhat separate types of work.
And just to be clear, I appreciate the public comments speaker. I, I don't know, but I presume that the concern about how many times I'm not hearing back from the city engineer was under the previous city engineer. I think for CM has only been on board here since May, end of April, April-ish, in a transition. So the responsiveness has completely changed.
Oh, it's not, it's not a commentary on.
I just meant to say that, you know, hey, there's, you know, it took me ten times to get hold of the city engineer, and I just wanted to make sure our city engineer was of room in.
I mean, in general, though, like, you know, I take, I think the point is well made in that there are things that we have created in terms of administrative burden that, whether or not it saves us money in the long run, or probably just, if we were to look at it fresh, I don't know if we would choose to say that that is the way to go. So that's probably a discussion that we have when we talk about overall fees, maybe not now. But I mean, that is something that I think is worth pursuing, just as a quality of life improvement to streamline those processes so that we're not like imposing a burden on folks, but.
I just also wanted to add, you know, I think cities across the United States, small cities especially across the United States, are seeing these trends, and they're not able to keep up with their expenditures. It's just larger cities that have large tax bases or, you know, large shopping centers, multiple gas stations, you know, different things that are contributing to them, they don't have, they're not seeing the same problems. But small cities like Clayton and and townships are seeing these, these problems across the board, so.
Need a car, Max.
The only other comment that I wanted to make is, to me, it makes more sense to be closer to about the one nineteen, one twenty instead of the one oh seven, given that we do have an issue with the streetlight district. I don't think it makes any sense to keep it in that bucket, it should be moved to the other, to the other side.
I, I think that's perfectly reasonable, and how nice that it's within four thousand dollars of the thing that we didn't take into account. So it's perfect.
Yeah, I think that just makes more sense so that it's at least included in there. And I would hate to have to cut any of these things, but I, I also would like to have a conversation with the entire council just to see what their thoughts are, because there could be other things that we haven't thought about. There could be more items that the public has, ideas to give us that we haven't thought about.
I, I, I think absolutely that's the case, and, you know, we're looking for what, what do we bring forward so that we can have that full conversation with the council.
For sure. I, I mean, for me, I, I would be, I would struggle with recommending something that calls for reserve fund spending in general. So I'm not sure how they, I'm trying to find the page. I'm not sure how you, how the math works out. That's why I'm, I'm like targeting, you know, the one oh seven, all those streetlights. Yeah, apparently I suggested we don't need streetlights, and I am an outlier, so that's fine.
But you might not be the outlier.
I don't know, I mean, I got flashlights, and I'm fine. Flash, yeah, or every other one. Like a rotation, but that doesn't seem like it's worth it.
And the twenty-one thousand for the HVAC maintenance, is that in here, in the library? What is this for?
No, that's City Hall, some just ongoing, City Hall. The, the library HVAC is a much more significant project, seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, so this is the new HVAC system that we just put in, is that, is this the regular expected cost?
It's the twenty seventeen-ish, newish HVAC, and it just, you know, it requires.
That's the regular maintenance.
More, yeah, and, you know, it hasn't been.
It has a computer control or interface issue that also has to be addressed.
Is it not under warranty?
No, we got all we could under warranty when it didn't function properly. And at the library, just to be, just for clarity, the work is not with the air conditioner system as it is with the computer controls and the ductwork as it relates to the heating system. That's the area that was not addressed. We had done and replaced the chiller here at the library probably, I think it was eight years ago or nine years ago. So that's, that's a very new chiller, who's been a couple of years before City Hall.
Uh, Councilmember one, if I, I could make one small suggestion to try to assist you.
Oh, there's table contents?
Yeah, and, and it might be easier to find the fun names there, and then you could just look at the page number, and it might be less flipping back and forth.
Yeah, well, all right.
I had to remind myself of that, it's the only reason that I'm like, oh, yeah, I could just look it up in the front, and then it wouldn't be flipping.
Okay, so, that's very helpful. There is the. There it is. It was something so amazing. Does the legislative department also include the planning commission as well?
Yes.
Okay. What is, what is other professional services in the legislative department? Is that, I know that we, every other year we do, like, there's election services, but is other professional something else?
Catherine will look that up in our system to answer your question.
All right, cool.
I'm sorry, my computer's going a little slow, I'm using my mobile hotspot. It is Larry Logic Services, who's our person that helps us here for city council meetings, and Digital Services, which is Paul.
It's the increased IT services.
Basically increased IT services for in hybrid meetings.
Okay, yeah, because our projection for the current year is low, but next year is like quadruple?
Well, there wasn't much in person, and I think mostly all of Paul's were paid out of the PIG grant, Comcast PIG.
I'm like doing math in my head here.
The planning commissioners are actually paid out of community development, out of O four, so sorry about that. And that is in the amount of.
It's pretty small.
Seventy-two hundred, yes. That's an estimate, because they don't get paid on months that they don't have meetings, so, yes.
What dues and subscriptions, and city promotional activity? It looks like it stays kind of static the last couple of years.
In legislative, yes.
That is an estimate based on the fact that there are a few seats open, and we, at least one person will be new in the city council, so they will have to have training, right? I believe that that had to do with training and CalCities, yes.
So that's different than education and training?
I'm sorry, rather than education and training.
I can see the CalCities part being in the subscriptions, but the training piece would be below. I'm just, but also like know what promotional activity is.
I will find out.
I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's really tiny, but now that we're looking at numbers and digging into them, I'm curious.
We can get back to you.
That's fine, yeah, perfect.
Did you, I'm trying, on the, on the table, on the major budget table change, the sum of the five bowls of items is, is far greater than the one hundred and twenty, I think, right? It's like closer to one seventy?
The, the, one twenty-two is the deficit associated with the table above.
Yeah, so you're suggesting these are items that we can consider, but these, these items add up to like one seventy-ish.
For, for the, uh.
Potential ways to make that for short form.
Oh, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and forty-eight, I think it says.
Is it? Okay, so. My old eyes.
It was in the presentation that I believe Catherine gave that talked about the total of the. Nope, it was about a hundred and forty-eight thousand that those, the, the COLA, the police vehicle, the, well, both pieces of the COLA, the police vehicle and one other piece was about a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Okay.
So that would solve the one hundred and twenty-two, minus fifteen, plus nineteen, if we're gonna keep our streetlights on.
So if you had to, so if you, if you're, if you were committed to bringing back a balanced budget, would you elect to make these cuts, or is the recommendation to use the reserve funds for that?
My recommendation would be to use the reserve funds for this year, for the pandemic recovery reserve. Since we have one-time funding outside of our normal resources and outside of our normal reserves, the ability to have a bit of a soft landing this year and not have to make those kinds of cuts straight off the, the top, I think is worth doing, and particularly for the sort of operational and morale benefits of doing that. And we will continue to work on this, whether it's through revenues or, you know, other means of continuing to scrub our budget. But I would very much make the recommendation this year that we consider the use of the pandemic recovery reserve, both for those deficit items, but also for the one-time items that are enumerated, including the senior accounting and the two improvement projects related to IT and records management.
And this seems like similar to what the point that you made, I think, in previous meetings about like knowing that there's an issue, but not addressing it. If we use reserve funding, I under, I get the, the idea of a soft landing, and, you know, you're hoping that in the future it becomes easier, but it is continuing in, in the, it is continuing the kicking, kicking the can down the road concept of we're not going to address the structural deficit, but we're going to use reserve funding for that. So I'm, I'm cognizant of that.
I, I think the idea would be to use this for the year and to use the year to plan for the future and think about how, you know, we can change things. But it's not, there, there isn't a lot of room in this budget. And there have been a, a lot of increased costs, you know, just the insurance costs increased by fifty-six thousand, sixty thousand.
That's significant.
That's really significant, and the gas and electric, and everyone knows gas prices are crazy, and water.
I think too, you know, as the council has discussed, potentially looking to twenty twenty-four for a potential ballot measure, we have to have a way to get from here to there while we're undergoing this community engagement effort, while we're continuing to scrub our budget, while we're continuing to, you know, really give visibility to all of the financial pieces of, you know, all the picture pieces. It, it, it feels unnecessarily harsh not to take advantage of those resources to give us the time to get to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, when there could be a more robust. It, it feels unnecessarily harsh not to take advantage of those resources to give us the time to get to 2024, 2025, when there could be a more robust, ongoing revenue source. I think that's part of the, the picture as well. It's not that we can't balance the budget without it, we can, but we're now really starting to constrict what we can do, how we do it, and the, the organization's ability to respond to the community in a, in it all a meaningful way, I think, in many areas, except for police. Police, we've got, but.
Holly, also, Vice Mayor Tillman, sorry, I also wanted to respond to your question about the dues and subscriptions. So it consists of a LAFCO cost of twelve hundred dollars. A LAFCO, sorry. Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAG, dues of thirty-five hundred, League of California Cities member dues, sixty-four hundred, Conoco State County annual assessment for mayor's conference, thirteen hundred, member dues for League of California Cities, two-fifty, and just a few other, like miscellaneous, so that's, that's what that.
Is there an appetite to kill those? I don't, I don't think we get the value out of it. I mean, it's not that big, but I don't think there's any value there. Yeah, I mean, the information that you get is essentially free. You can get it if you want to.
Yeah, but I don't know, maybe Laura can correct me, or even Raina, can we just, can the public just walk into those meetings and participate? And attend the, the sessions and the webinars for free?
For the CalCities.
Yeah.
Some of them, yes, some of them, no. A lot of the CalCities offerings are either free or written down for members, where they are not for non-members. So, you know, it varies a little bit by specific. Segment, if you will. So.
No, I know that I've, I've gotten a lot of, I don't know how many of them you've attended, but the ones that I have, I've learned a lot, and also get to, you know, interact with other people in other cities, bounce ideas off of them, get ideas, to your point, that other cities are going through the same things that we are. Sure, you can just cold-call people and, you know, ask them for a time on their calendar, but it's a lot more interactive when they're at the meetings to commingle with people and brainstorm in sessions, to me, so. Again, we can bring it up to the rest of the council. To your point, Raina, and, and to Jeff, I hear you about the whole kicking the can down the road and having a balanced budget, et cetera, but I also feel like, based on that survey that we had, that a lot of the residents didn't even know what was going on, wanted to be engaged and have conversations with us, and to be informed on what's happening. So, to me, I think the most, it makes the most sense to bring this back to the council. I'm not opposed to using the pandemic recovery funds, because I think that was part of the reason why we, when we also went to it, so that we can streamline the reporting for the federal government. That was a bigger piece of it, but also to have these conversations on how we wanted to use the funds. And I think that that's something that we should do together as a council to figure out not only how we use it now, but going forward, and ripping the Band-Aid off on a lot of things, I can see, but given the, the taxing of our staff's time, responding and being, I would call it even reactive to the community on the things that they need, it's, it's, it's a lot, and it's a tiny staff. And I think, to me, to not even offer a COLA to, to staff that's bending over backwards to, to handle all of the considerations that the residents want them to have, it, it would be a slap in the face. So I'm, I'm not wel, willing to, I'm not willing to cut that right now myself. I'd rather have a conversation with the rest of the council. So to me, I'd, I want to move this forward, but I don't know what we do if we're split. How does that work?
All right, the one thing. I would definitely propose that we cut the spending on, in the legislative group, like, for ourselves. That, to me, is an easy, like, easy thing to do, because, as the caller said, we're volunteers anyways.
Are you talking about the stipend?
Yes.
As opposed to the CalCities thing?
No, the stipend. Like, that takes, that covers forty thousand-ish?
About thirty thousand.
Well, twenty-eight plus bennies and planning commissions number seven is like forty thousand.
Oh, yes, right, yes, yes.
I mean, because you, we have to, you pay the employer side of the FICA as well, right? So you're gonna talk about forty grand.
Yes, yeah.
It's not a lot, but it's something.
He's counting the, he's count, Laura, he's, I mean, Assistant to the City Manager, he's, he's counting the planning commissioners as. Yeah, 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 yes.
Yeah, I don't have the precise number, but I'm just.
She was, I could hear her saying how she's getting the forty. How are you getting forty?
And then, like, with you, I, you know, I can't, I, I can't, you know, the, the things that we've already agreed to with the COLA for the folks, I, I, I don't like going back on things that we've agreed on, so that, to me, seems like a non-starter. I would say the police vehicle is a, is a good target, but. It doesn't feel like it, if you're gonna have like an outdated vehicle. I mean, it's not unprecedented, as you said, right, but what would, I guess I would, my question would be, what would be the impact to police services if we deferred a vehicle for a year? Is, is there any tangible impact, or is it more like intangible impacts?
There wouldn't be a huge or significant impact. The thing to consider is that, you know, we went for years behind. We just got caught up. Now you're talking about going behind again. And the most important consideration is that, that vehicle is the police officer's office, not inside here, but that's their office, that's where they work. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's doable, like it, like it always is and like it has been, but I don't think it would have a significant impact on policing in Clayton. Until the next one gets deferred and the next one gets deferred.
I mean, you get, you get like one bite at that offwall, essentially, or else you're gonna get so far behind.
And then, and then how and when do you catch up, is the issue?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, that's where the future discussion comes in on other cost components and other revenue components, because then you essentially have to take it as a commitment that you would make that up or catch up at some point in the future. That's not too far away. But it gets you, and I only, I only talk about it, is because it's the largest single item that's identified here, not because I, I think that that is the most unnecessary thing.
And if you funded it out of ARPA funds, which is a discussion later, you still will have the same structural question next year in the budget when they go to replace the next one. So you are kind of, so if you, if you were to use ARPA funds, you still would be able to reduce the seventy thousand out of the general fund, but then next year, you'll have the same conversation, because they will need to replace the next vehicle in line to replace.
I mean, the distinction between ARPA funds and general funds is like, it's like nothing. There's no daylight there. It's the same thing, right?
Except that the ARPA funds are essentially non-renewable. They are not our general tax base. They are a one-time resource.
But anything deficit spending when you're going into reserves is gonna be the same thing. ARPA is general, or, you know, whether or not you, you transfer from your reserve to your general fund or take it straight from ARPA, I mean, it's the same thing, because we're in the hole anyways.
Correct.
Those are like the same.
Also, the challenge gets to be if you defer a vehicle this year, and you have another one scheduled for next year.
You double up.
You, you get to the point where you have to buy two at one time, and you have a bigger budget challenge.
At some point in the future, you will need to double up.
Also.
Or triple up.
To remind you guys that supply chain issues are really, you know.
It's a thing.
It's a thing, yeah. So even if we have it in the budget this year, you know, there's a chance that it may not happen, so, and then if you're putting it off, the same thing could happen the next year. So, you know, if they order it in July, we may not get it until next July and, or June, you know, and that's when it would be paid for. So I don't, I don't know what the police car situation is right now, but I know, you know, just a few years ago, it was at least seven months out, so it's probably longer than now.
Right now, at least, prior to any additional issues arising from the supply chain. It's been ten-ish months between the time we place the order and the time we get the vehicle, particularly after equipping. So, but that's been true the last couple of years, so, I mean, it would just get worse than that. But, I mean, essentially, you've just got the same, whenever you try to catch up, you're going to have this problem, whether it turns out to be a year from now or two years from now.
And supply chain can't get worse than this now, right?
Yes, it can. Don't, don't, please do not tempt the universe.
And I know that we've never used debt financing before for vehicles or for, you know, for our equipment, but it, it is something that we could also consider in the future, using some type of. Yeah, you could do a lease purchase, and they have government lease purchases, but you actually do own it at the end of the lease, but you're not paying for all of it upfront, you know.
I mean, that's a potential as well. You just get the vehicle, you're gonna pay a premium, and then you could balance. Because if you're talking forty and seventy, you're basically there.
I'd have to see, I, I'd have to look at the amortization schedule for the lease.
The lease market is kind of, has gone upside down now. I mean, the cost of lease is crazy, because used car prices are nuts. So, I don't know if you have.
I, I'm not sure that the options are exactly, have the same.
No.
Character that they did a year ago, or two years ago, pre-COVID.
It's worth considering.
It, it's, it is worth considering. You know, we could take a look at that. We did, for the first time, do a lease purchase on the police radios, so you saw that in the, in the budget, so rather than spending two-hundred and something thousand, we're spending thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Once that gets in the base, challenging though it may be, then that becomes an ongoing, an operational cost, so it's just even, right? Like, you just keep turning them over.
It helps your, your stability of your, of your outputs a little bit.
Yes. And, you know, honestly, our vehicles have been very much the same way, although it's not a lease purchase, effectively, we, we don't have a sinking fund, so we just put money in and take it back out, and put money in and take it back out on a, kind of on a.
Yeah, I mean, there's essentially a one-time, you get a one-time, like, benefit if you go that way.
Right, but, but then it just.
Yeah.
Becomes a twelve-month.
Yeah.
Rolling that doesn't produce any new benefit.
No, you, you only get once. I mean, I would, I would consider that if we're talking about what we bring forward, if you can determine what that would look like.
We can do that.
If there's potential operating savings there, you combine that with the other, and then you're talking about your deficit is probably in the low twenties, maybe, ish. And I think that's a little bit easier, and then we could talk specifically about other reserve spending for other items. That, to me, feels a little better.
I would like both of them put in there. So I would like both options. Either recommend that we use this pandemic recovery reserve fund and the edits that he just requested, so that everybody knows what we're, we're talking about right now.
Which is to say, just to make sure that I've captured it, that we know what the pandemic recovery reserve option looks like. The other option right now looks like a combination of cutting all of the stipends for elected and appointed officials.
Which I disagree with, just since it's recorded, I disagree with, but I'm not willing to squash that. We can bring it back to the council. Go ahead.
And looking at alternative financing for police vehicles to see if we can reduce the amount from the seventy thousand.
On, on that subject, just historically, I can tell you that if you're talking one vehicle or even one or two vehicles, it's not likely that you're going to get a lease option, unless you're dealing with multiple vehicles at a time, they're not even going, they're not even interested in talking to you about it.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, but it's worth calling. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would like, I, I think bringing forward a plan that says to use the reserve to cover the thing is, is an option that should be presented. But I think the alternative should be presented in a way that we're not using, I'd like to see something brought forward that says, this is the way that you get to not using reserve fund. You know, other components, it, it may, it's not probably going to be one single thing, but it will be a, a few or several smaller things that add up to that. And I think that should be presented as well as, as a, as an option to discuss.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And outside of the COLA, which is, has been presented to you as a potential option, the unrepresented miscellaneous COLA, as I said, I would strongly encourage us to move forward with including that. And so, what I'm hearing you say is an alternative to that would be these, these, these components that you've mentioned.
Yes. I mean, I don't miss, I'm not sure I would sign on to defer replacing a vehicle, but I think we present it as a, something to discuss. And that gets us essentially there. If we, if we want, if, if that is something we want to do. I, I would not necessarily consider eliminating, like, these other things, eliminating the COLA, because we've already agreed to it.
You, you've agreed to the COLA for PD, that's a negotiated agreement. For the unrepresented miscellaneous employees, there is no agreement in place. There is no requirement.
I've agreed to it in my mind.
Oh, well, okay. Thanks for clarifying. I like that answer.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's a good idea, so I would not suggest that.
Right.
On some of these others, you know, who's gonna suggest not doing maintenance on your HVAC system? That doesn't seem like a good plan either. So, like, there's, you don't really have a lot of options. So I would just, I would, I would present that, and then we can talk about it.
And you did mention that there were others, so maybe between now and next Tuesday, you had mentioned there were, I'm sorry, two Tuesdays from now, I can't even keep track of the dates, yes, in two weeks. Oh, and thank you for saying that, because I really was thinking it was next week, but next week is graduation, it's two weeks. Okay.
Well, next week, you do have a meeting. It's just not on the budget.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, so could you tell us, or come back with it in two Tuesdays, what the other options were that you said were kind of intertwined with other things, and it's a little bit sticky or messy, or whatever verb it was that you used?
That the other funds are, are more interconnected.
What I was referring to are the other things that are in that major changes table, which are.
Of this stuff?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I mean by sticky. It's like you can't really undo some of those.
Okay.
And, or without significant negative consequences. So, you know, it's harder to say that any of those would make any sense at all.
I see. I was thinking it was something completely different.
No.
That we haven't seen yet.
Okay.
No, all right.
Did, did you give direction on the back, if you turn that page over, there are the additional.
Not yet.
Requests, okay.
This one?
Yes.
No, not yet.
And the number is slightly different, because the, the street lighting number was off by about six thousand dollars. We've already moved the street lighting into the other bucket, so you're really talking about the one-year accounting position, the street lighting dis, no, the additional IT support and the records management.
Are you gonna get one, how are you gonna get a one-year thing? Are you gonna just go through a firm to, to bring someone on, or are you gonna hire someone?
You just define it as a one-year limited-term position. We're gonna have to pay benefits, and that includes benefits in CalCers, that includes all that, yes, it is, but it's just a defined position, so it's in our budget approved for one year, and.
Can we contract that instead, and then not make it permissible? As a contractor?
By and large, she's right. The answer to that is no. PERS takes a very, very dim view of doing work that is just like other work you would do with a contractor, and they will deem it to be covered under PERS, yeah.
But it's a, it's a, like a limited duration.
Yeah, it's a limited term.
Limited term, limited, it's like essentially having, hiring someone to do a project.
Yeah, it's like hiring them for a year, and then.
Or like, what, a month? Let's say you needed a work for a month, that's not permissible.
Then we could hire a retired, possibly a retired annuation, or if, if they're under a eleven-hundred hours.
This is a bad example, but what if you go to a contest and say, someone's absent, I need you to fill in for a month. That's not permissible, right?
That's correct, that's not permissible.
So can we just stretch that into the same?
No, that's the part that doesn't work is the stretching it beyond nine hundred and sixty hours, a thousand hours. Um, it.
In a facility? Yes.
Yeah. You you get into, um, yeah, PERS will come after you in a big way and we do not want to get on the radar screen for that.
What if you use two different people?
That is very disruptive and doesn't get you the same benefit of having a single person.
Okay. And and you're right, Councilmember One, years ago, PERS did not have this view of of that position, that type of a situation. But you know, since they were not making a lot of money on their investment returns, they've really tightened down on what is considered a perizable position. And cities have been audited and had to pay back PERS, a bunch of money plus a penalty plus interest. Um, that were found to be hiring people that they felt were perizable, sort of been perizable employees, even under limited term. So they they didn't do us any favors by taking away some of that flexibility that cities historically had used up until probably about five or six years ago.
So it's like, is that, is that hour limit? Is that the same harbor? Like if you're under that hours, then you're pretty much do whatever you want?
Yes, pretty much. There are some nuances to it, but by and large, if you stay under that, you're in better shape. Um, and we need a person for longer than that. I I understand that it has some potential, you know, it has, it has, it has a bit of a tail in terms of long-term liability. It's a pretty small tail when you're talking about one position for one year.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a very long tail and it's.
Doing business.
Yeah, it's it's a. Or uh. We need to invest some in our financial management.
All right.
So if.
Do you want to resolve these now or?
I would love to get some direction from the committee. If not, we'll just bring them to the council in the same format. But they're gonna hope that you had some recommendation.
I don't necessarily, I mean, for me, I don't like looking at the individual one-off items in a vacuum. Like, I think we need to incorporate a larger ARPA plan that talks about all of, not necessarily all of the things, but a more of a holistic view so that you're not making decisions without the influence of all the other information that may be pertinent when you're talking about the total funds. So it's hard to, it's hard to say, well, you have one point four million dollars or you want to spend twenty thousand. I mean, that's usually you would just say yes because it's not a huge amount. But in the context of the larger spend, I would be reticent to uh make that recommendation without understanding the overall plan for the funds. Not that I'm opposed to these things. I think the uh, well, the street lights, if we shift that over. Um, the only one that I'm not like, well, if I had the stack ranked them, I guess I'd probably put the records management last. But I'm not necessarily opposed to any of these, but I do think that having that discussion with a larger context is is more valuable.
No, I know what you mean, because to me, this is what I was getting getting at earlier is when we were, when we used to have the buckets that ARPA, um, the ARPA funds could only be used for, we were, we were gonna be very strategic on how they were used, right? And so now that that's out the window, we really, I think we have to go back to that. At least I would like to. Um, instead of just having a bucket where you're just ticking off numbers and getting down to a zero balance. I I think I don't want to spend, I don't even want to spend weeks trying to come up with a plan, even though I know we don't have that many weeks. But I don't want this to linger on. Like, I think we do have to define what priorities do we want to use for those funds? And I think a lot of these things will fall underneath that so that.
Yeah, I think that's a better way.
At the end of the day, that all of these things can get done and wrapped up in a pretty bow by the time we sign up on the budget at the end of June. But at least we know what higher priorities and list them out and these things can just go into those buckets. That would feel better to me, too.
I think that's a better way to get to it.
So the recommendation would be then that I think probably is, I mean, we don't have very many meetings.
Okay, well, this is what I would avoid. I I don't want to like say, at this meeting, we'll talk about this and the next meeting, we'll talk about this part and then the next meeting, we'll talk about that part. I want to like compress all of those.
You're gonna talk about all on June seventh?
Yes.
You're gonna come up with an ARPA prioritization strategy and your budget discussion.
Yeah, because if you were to say, we're not gonna come back at all and this is the only thing we're gonna do, then we could be done with this right now. But I know that there's other things. And so I don't want to talk about those at the same time.
Um, so we would bring back the ARPA item and then follow it. I mean, in the same meeting, um, with the budget item, there's a little bit of give and take between those.
They're connected.
Bring you, yeah, it's it's like, you know, the recommendation is is on the budget will be fluid because it will be dependent in part on what the answer is in the prior discussion. Um, um, on a broader ARPA strategy and whether there are, you know, what the criteria are that the council wants to use to determine what ARPA funds are going to be spent on. Um, you know, there's a huge list of unmet needs that includes, you know, some storm pain things, a bunch of.
Keller House.
Keller House, I just, the the list is very long.
And if I can, just to clarify, I want to make sure I understood, the two hundred and forty eight oh forty two on those items now list the streetlights. I think Catherine in your PowerPoint, it's it's not here, but those were being suggested be funded out of the current tranche of ARPA funds?
The residual of the current tranche of ARPA funds.
The current budget, the way that we presented it, is asking the council for a hundred, around a hundred and twenty thousand, less the fifteen. But we may add that fifteen back into storm waters, so around, or streetlights, sorry. So around a hundred and twenty two thousand is what we're currently asking for.
Out of the current residual of the ARPA.
It doesn't really matter. All of those revenues will be in place as of July first, um, twenty twenty two. So whether you count it from the first tranche or the second tranche is somewhat irrelevant. It's of the amount that will be sitting in that bucket for FY twenty three.
And it won't be, I mean, obviously dipping into our normal fund balance. So we do still have, you know, a pretty healthy fund balance. It's about a year of our operating expenditures, so.
Do you have everything you need?
So let me try to summarize. Um, what's going to come forward on June seventh is a discussion about an ARPA prioritization scheme, excuse me. And then with the budget, um, both ARPA options and non-ARPA options, some of which um were identified by Councilmember One, including cutting all of the elected and appointed stipends. Um, and potentially looking at leases on a PD vehicle. I don't know that I'll have all the answers on that.
Or deferring.
Or deferring, um, uh, or deferring for now and picking it up when we can answer that question. Um, as well as any of the other, you know, pieces of information that were included here. Um, and those are the things that we asked you for direction on that we would be bringing back for June seventh.
There was one suggestion from the committee. They also wanted to get more clarification about Department O one promotional activity, what what was included in that component. No, she didn't answer that yet.
So I believe that that's what we need and what you said. Okay, so with that, because that was only the first, okay, it was the largest of the three items that are on the agenda for today. We are, Catherine will give you a very brief update on the accounting um project uh uh status. Um, and then um we have actually largely talked about the fee one, but I'll come back to that at the end.
Um, so first to answer the question about city promotional activity in the legis, in the legislative department. Um, twenty eight hundred dollars was spent on do the right thing banners. Um, and then banner design was eight hundred. And there's some time in here for payroll um allocation, um, and that's for all the different um decorations during the holidays and it's like putting up the decorations, taking down the decorations. Um, and then um there was some.
It's, it's fine.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Those were, those are the expenses.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And thank you guys for all of your hard work on pulling all this together and jumping in and answering our questions. I appreciate it. Okay.
So um, so just to give you guys a brief update on the accounting um status or the accounting action plan. Um, our current fiscal year, we're on our way to being caught up. Um, going through the budget process has really helped us go through our GL. Um, something that, you know, a senior accountant would be able to help us with is GL maintenance. Um, and um just a lot of project work also um that we need help on. Um, but um I um I'd have to say that we're about ninety percent caught up for our current year. Um, we um, our our banker reconciliation module is also almost there. Um, we will be able to use the system, so that is very good. And um they have um been able to identify the transactions that were causing the GL to the bank to be off. And um actually, this week, NFP account, uh, the NFP Technologies is who we hired to help us with this. Um, and um they um basically um know our accounting software very well. They're specialists, but they're also CP, the the man that's been helping us is a CPA also, so he understands the accounting side to it also. Um, and so um he is actually the one that's been helping do the bank reconc, he's doing our current bank reconciliations now and getting us current. So that then when he passes it on to me and to our 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 department, we um are putting into place the processes that will not cause this to happen in the future. Um, and um, you know, soft closing our books every single month when we're done with our reconciliations so that um it doesn't kind of make the system have these weird idiosyncrasies. And it is a very strange program, so I've learned it now. I I like it just fine. But um it um, there are some weird idiosyncrasies to it. So um, so I'm thankful to NFP Accounting Technologies. And there was some work that I was gonna have Mase do, but it just made more sense to have them do it since they are the ones that are familiar with the accounting program. Another place, or you know, another CPA firm wouldn't have to learn the intricacies of the bank recs or that module. Um, so um, we also have ironed out our accounts payable posting process, which has been uh, that, this all ties into why the bank reconciliations have problems. So um, how things were, how it has, all has to do with like dates of accounts payable. The, and there's just multiple things that you wouldn't think are not intuitive. So like our system, when you post a transaction, it's not the date that you're posting it, it's the invoice date. So your post date is your invoice date. And you would think that there would be a separate post date also, but there's not. So there are lots of things. We're documenting all of them so that this doesn't happen in the future. Um, in um, our our goal is to hard close our books by the end of July um within our accounting system for twenty twenty two. Um, I, um, let's see. As far as the audit findings, um, we're working through them as we're working through all these other things. Everything's somewhat interrelated, so um as far as for like the fixed asset module, that, we shouldn't ever have that problem in the future. Um, but this is something that's an oddity with the system where you can only post your fixed assets in your fixed asset module in your database version versus your um, your version that's like um online. So it's, it's just, it's just interesting. Um, um, as far as documenting our general ledger closing process, um, we're doing that. And um, we are still getting some some assistance from Mase and Associates, but not very much. And I've been very careful at how much I've used them. Um, they helped us with the initial getting caught up because we had a lot of postings that we needed help getting caught up on. They helped us with that project. Um, but they've just been helping us a little bit here and there with um diff, a few different things. But um I haven't been using them a ton. Um, I um, the the revenue and expense allocations, I think this one will also be done shortly. Um, and identifying and defining notes payable, um, they are helping me do this. And Mase and Associates is helping me do this and document it. Um, and then as far as our IT audit findings, um, we have contracted with Apex Technologies to do an IT assessment and it's assessing our overall IT structures within the entire city. So um, they just started that work and um they're, um, we're using PEG Comcast PEG monies for that. That that assessment's going to cost seventy four hundred dollars, which is a great deal. Um, but I also think, you know, that they, that they will have recommendations um after they do their assessment. Um, um, they, there are some federal grant opportunities um that are out there. Um, and Apex is familiar with the grant process and they're able to um recommend use of LexiPole to help us. Um, so there might be some grant opportunities for um for IT improvement. So that, you know, it's not, it's not a hundred percent certain. So that's why we still have money in the IT section of the ARPA uses. Um, but there's a, there's a chance we could get grant money. Um, as far as succession planning, um, I think the biggest thing that we'll have to focus on this year is um, is refining and completing our um fiscal management policy. Um, and this we plan to do and document within LexiPole. So um, so yeah, so once that, and and then, you know, we can think about putting money into having an outside accounting firm as a backup. Um, however, that's an expensive option because, you know, CPA firms are expensive, so.
That's not a good option.
No, so it's, it's difficult to have a succession, a succession plan where you have someone in training, ready to take over if somebody leaves. It um.
I think your best bet is is very robust procedural documentation. That's what small organizations typically do.
Yeah. Developing those processes and procedures. We're, we're documenting everything as we're going along, but um it would be nice. The senior accountant position would be helping us to do that. Um, and as far as the fiscal impact of all of this, um, everything is in the current um projections that we currently have in the general funds. So we haven't taken any or asked for any additional funds from ARPA at this point. Um, but the total of all of these is about thirty five, thirty six thousand dollars um that we will have spent by the end of the year. So that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Are there any questions from the committee members?
Yeah, I I have a person. Ignoring the um, the succession planning component, do you have a sense of timing for when the rest of these things will be complete?
I hope that with the closing of the fiscal year, we'll have everything except for obviously the fiscal management policy. That won't be complete. Um, that's gonna be an ongoing process. Um, but all of these things will be done um before we close.
And you talk about bank reconciliations um here, and that's kind of been like one of the um benchmarks that we're looking at. Do we, are we also reconciling all of our other balance sheet accounts on a monthly basis?
We will be. We, we, we have been um.
Is that target?
I would like to reconcile every single fund on a monthly basis. Um, and um.
I mean, is that, is that uh included within your plan for at, you know, at some point by the end of the year?
Yes.
Some point.
Before I report out to you guys on a quarterly basis, that will be one of the steps in in closing the books and reporting out.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't think we've talked about that in the past, but I I do think that's a, a good practice.
I agree.
So. Cool.
And just to clarify, when you say year end, you mean calendar year end, not fiscal?
Fiscal year end.
Fiscal year end.
So June, June of twenty twenty two, we'll be closing June of twenty twenty two by, I, I mean, probably soft close by the end of July. So we'll have a sense and then fully close by the end of August, I would say. Um, unless there are any major things that come up, which I hope not.
Okay, good.
Period thirteen sometime. Period thirteen sometimes lasts a little bit longer than that, but, I mean, it won't last two years now, so that's good.
Yeah, and I, I think that in my mind, there will be things that are still outstanding because we haven't received them yet that we're going to have to accrue back because some things don't come in until, I think, September timeframe for a few things. But we'll know, we'll have a sense of what those are.
Okay.
Cool.
There are no other questions from the committee? If there are questions or comments from the public, please come to the podium.
I'm here, Sci-Fi Comment. Um, Jeff, I've talked to you about this. I've also talked to you, Holly. You're doing a great job. Continuing for procedure-wise, that's where you need to go with the, with the, um, dealing with the continuity. I would advise you also to add in Zoom meetings or something where you can interact with your computer as you're doing documentation. That seems to be really how I did my turnover when I retired with a very high-level niche job. And everybody else in my company was doing that, too. Uh, it can be carried forward to many years. And so again, use that, um, 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 as much as you can. And, and that would really help you if you're talking to like the second accountant. The other thing I would recommend, um, as we go forward is, is, uh, and I just lost my train of thought here, um, with respect to continuity. Oh, Power BI. Are you using Power BI in the, in the full suite of Microsoft tools in the city? It does take some time to learn, but I can say to you, that is the future. Excel is antique. Um, it does take a little time. You would have to commit as a council the training and bring someone to help you through it. But for your budgets and everything, now you do have software, but everything you do, such as reconciliations, it does everything for you. So, you know, even so, we're paying money for this good software, which is a great, great price. I've talked to you in the past on this. Those are things that you need to go into the city is to get the full suite of Microsoft products. They'll make you more efficiently, especially on teams when you're, for city council, if you could put it online, people talking to each other, community talking to council members, it's public. So the bottom line is you can go into these things. It does take a little training, but again, it is a huge productivity boost to the, to your work. Thanks.
At this time, we do not have any Zoom hands raised on this item for public comment.
There is no action requested of the committee. It was just, uh, an update as we promised that we would continue to update you on the accounting. So, uh, good work to, um, Catherine for shepherding all of that work through. Um, it's, it's nice to see things getting checked off that list. Um, if there are, are there any other questions on the accounting status, follow-up audit thing? Okay. Um, the last item, uh, is, is really just a placeholder. Um, we do need to come back to you with, uh, recommendations on fees. Um, we will likely bring forward at the June seventh meeting, um, the recommendation to just do the CPI increases and to follow that with, um, some additional evaluation. But, um, we probably don't have time to get that done for the June seventh meeting. Um, but our, our fees are two years out of date in terms of just CPI, um, increases. So, um, that will be, uh, an item of discussion, um, at the June seventh meeting. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions at this point, but we haven't, we don't have a proposed fee schedule to bring you.
If we do it just as a straight CPI and for expedience, is there, uh, we don't have to wait for the full year? Can we come back earlier?
You can come back at, we can come back at any time with those fee recommendations up or down. Um, some of the fees have a thirty or sixty-day implementation. Uh, some of them don't, like the park rental fees, et cetera, um, don't. But, um, we, there is no time restriction on when those can come back, except us getting the work done. Yes. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but it was mostly on the agenda, just as a reminder to us, uh, that we know that we're, um, working on the, the fee schedule itself and that we will be bringing it back. But we did not have it done in time for today. Are there any questions on the fee schedule? I suspect that there's public comment on the fee schedule or not fee schedule. Please.
Thank you again. I spoke in prior meetings about this and also in today's meeting about the permitting process. I spent, uh, my thirty years at Chevron in various different departments, including finance, uh, corporate governance and compliance. Um, we're a very process-oriented company. Uh, compliance probably talks more about your permitting process. And so what I would encourage you to do, and I think Jeff, you're alluding to it, is you need to look at where the value is being driven by this permit process and also the value that would bring revenues back to the city. The other thing I saw, working with, I want to confirm with you, with the prior engineer, there was a conflict of interest. And it was very bad conflict of interest. And, uh, and so what I want to tell you is that running a meter with a, with an engineering company, well, I was finding out it was going to take three to four hours for a simple driveway review. That would be two trips back, at least two trips. First trip to examine the site, the second trip to come back to, to ensure that the work was done correctly. Well, uh, each one would take at least an hour to two hours. And a lot of that time was for that engineer's time of commute. So basically, it's, it's Uber time. So why I want you to really step forward as a council is saying, this is not free money when it comes to the residents of the city. What it will do here is it's going to drive people to do the work under the table. That's how construction is done, and we don't want to do things under the table. So what I would, we saw that same thing at Chevron where things, people were not seeking approval on certain work. So what you have to do is what I would say to you, find out what value, where value had is, and then what no value had is eliminate the work or simplify it. So what would that look like? For example, for driveways, driveways right now are five hundred, under five hundred square feet, you don't look at most, most of the time. So what you do is increase it to a thousand feet, but put a base minimum fee on it, for example, a ninety-nine dollar process. And just a before and after picture, showing it's not a significant change. Because when it was approved, it was, it was approved by the city at some point. So what you want to do is make it a fast process. And the key thing here, where I believe it does encourage revenue raising, is you want to get the contractor who's doing business. So that's the key thing you want to drive from the residents is who's the contractor doing work? And then you send out the business license fee to them. So that way, you're driving revenues into the city and you're not putting valuable resources from your engineer. Because when these engineers are dealing with city, like the person with, it's a twenty, thirty-minute call. So you don't want to have that contact with the people, so you need to fast-track this work. So it says basically, yep, looks good, boom, takes about a minute to do that review. And that's really what a drive would do. Again, I want you to extend it out more than just driveways. Look at other work. What work should be dragged to county versus the city? Thank you very much for your time.
Currently, I do not have any hands raised via Zoom for this item.
Again, no action requested, uh, from the committee, so if there are no other questions, that would complete that item.
I don't have any questions. I just have an ask based off of what, how the public, public comment was. But when we do bring that back, if, if it can kind of be, um, you guys always give us good reports, but robust to include all of the, the, um, charges or fees that we currently charge. Um, and kind of like the history. I think you guys have done that in the past anyway. But I am curious now, now it's got me thinking. I want to do a little bit of digging myself. Just to understand how the whole permitting process works, the fees that we're charging for that. I'm not saying you have to do anything extra, but to the extent, to the extent, you don't have to dig. I'm going to dig, but if you can point me in the right direction, I'll do it myself. How about that? Yes.
Yes, um, and, and we'll need to help, um, put that together. Uh, we will not have all that done by June seventh.
I don't want it done by June seventh.
Oh, bless you. Um, that's a great answer. Um, that's my own, my biggest hesitation.
And that was, that was my same thing. Like, I, and there's a lot to do, but you have two weeks. Uh, uh, I don't think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no.
Um, but that's why I said, can we bring it back, um, after that? Because I think more, I would even go a step further and say not, we should just charge a nominal amount. Like, why do we even need a permit? It's your freaking driveway. I don't need to be involved in that. Go do it. If it's a problem, you're going to fix it yourself. It's your driveway.
And we will provide you the requirements for doing that.
There's change in the law and statute of ADA that holds the city responsible to ensure ADA compliance.
Well.
That's, that's our best driver right now is ensuring ADA.
I, I would say to the maximum extent possible, we should not be doing that. Only when it's like absolutely required. So like, I would leave it to the creative people in the city to figure out where that could be. But like, I don't think we should be involved at all. So if you're telling me we have to be involved a little bit, then okay, a little bit. But I'd rather not be involved at all.
We will bring forward legally compliant, but not overbearing.
Compliance is good. Compliance is good. Minimalist is good. Like, nonexistent is also good.
But not by June seventh.
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you for that. Um, so if there are no other, uh, pieces of direction or comments on that item, uh, or any, Janet will tell us where we are on the agenda.
Thank you. We are actually at adjournment, so it is five forty-one PM. We will adjourn this meeting until our next, uh, needed budget audit committee meeting. Thank you.